We are going to start a discussion this evening on core services. And we will turn the microphone over to City Manager Jeff Towery to introduce the topic. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council and Budget Committee. This will be your second deep dive into the topic of core services. We spent a fairly lengthy work session on the issue back in September. And what we have done at the staff level in the meantime is identify the approximate cost it will take to increase a variety of services from their current level up an additional level. This is not a budget proposal. This is a what if. It's intended to help inform your discussion next month with Deb Galardi and with the Commission, the Water and Light Commission, when you further explore the utility service fee and methodology and how much revenue you would like to generate through that, through that source. We would ask the Council to try to stay at a fairly high policy level. We're going to walk you through a number of the what ifs. I plan to only talk at you for 15 or 20 minutes and save the bulk of time for questions and conversation and observations of the, of the body. So with that, I'm going to ask Amanda to share the screen. She's going to pilot the PowerPoint for me and I'll walk you through some of the high points of the report that we provided to you in the agenda packet. That doesn't look like the first slide. There we go. Thanks, Amanda.
Is it showing, it's showing up on my screen?
We got it. Yeah, so we've got the slide show version now. Thank you. So we'll, we'll talk about the cost overview tonight. Again, not to set an expectation for how much money you think you would like to generate, but to really give you the information to help inform that decision when you review methodologies and other options next month. So next slide, please, Claudia or Amanda, thanks. So we'll talk a little bit about purpose, background. We'll review a variety of scenarios and we'll talk about next steps as we move forward. Our focus is to provide a high level overview of the, the cost to increase current levels of service and to invest in some services that are currently unfunded or underfunded. To, to sort of set out an understanding of how future revenues could be used. And as I mentioned earlier, this is not a budget proposal. This is a series of what ifs to, to sort of set the context and to be able to identify the impact of investing or reinvesting in a variety of services. Next slide. So this work comes out of the MacTown 2032 Strategic Plan, which set an objective to identify and focus on our core services. It was further driven by this body's discussion around the approval and adoption of the current fiscal year's budget. We started a process in July to really fully explore the cost drivers, the expense side of our budget, to look at potential revenue options and to, and to bring forward a proposal from this body that would generate additional revenue to support the existing levels of service and allow us to reinvest in new services. The first phase, last year, we did identify core services at the department level. Those were incorporated into the FY 2122 budget. We spent time with you again, late summer, early fall, talking about core services from an organizational perspective. And now this third phase is identifying approximate costs for investing in these services. Next. So let me walk you through this bar graph. This is data that's pulled from the big spreadsheet, the attachment to your document that has all of the individual services listed, as well as the, the staff and budget investments in those services. And so, so all the graphics that are in the staff report are pulled directly from that data. Just to give you a sense, if, if we were to invest simply in the services that were below base in the top 25, the, the approximate cost is just under $2.2 million. We also showed you what it would look like to look at all the services in the top 25 that are below base and at base, as well as all top 25 services. So that third bar over the 4.2 million would essentially raise the level of each of the top 25 services, one, up one level from where they are currently. We also took a look at the top 50 services. And so that, that number sort of in the middle of the screen is six point, almost $3 million is the amount that would bring all of the below base services up to base. The very middle bar is all of the below base and base services up one level. And then the $8.6 million bar would in, would, would increase the top 50 services all at one level. And then the final three bars, take a look at the full, at the full list, again, looking at all below base services, the below base and base and all services. Next slide. We also broke out the FTE required to increase those levels of service. And as with the budget numbers, we've identified the approximate FTE for three different scenarios for top 25, top 50 and all levels of service. And the costs for those FTE are built into those budget numbers. So the additional, there, there's no, there's no cost that's in addition to that. Some of the investments, as you look through the details, are substantially staff driven, depending on the service, others are not necessarily. So next slide. What we would like you to do tonight, in addition to ask questions and share any other information that you might have with us, particularly asking for additional information, if there is any, is we'd like to get a sense of, you know, how, how you would define a successful 2223 budget proposal. Would you like us to invest primarily in the top 25 services? Would you like us to invest across the organization? Would you like us to focus on all services or just those that are below base or those that are below base and base? And that's why we ran several scenarios for you. So if we, if we look simply at the below base to base level services, makes it a little bit easier to read, we show you those three options that are focusing on the top 25, the top 50 and all services that are below base. We show you again on the top with the blue bars, the, the budget cost and the green bars, the FTE that are in, that are embedded in those budget costs. Next slide. This looks at the both, the low base services and the base levels of service. I should have reminded everyone, and particularly for the public record, that as you're looking at the matrix, there are four levels of service, below base, base, moderate and optimal. So sorry for not doing that in the introduction. So this focuses again on the top 50, I'm sorry, on the services that are both base and below base. Shows you the top 25, the top 50 and all services. And again, the blue bar is the budget cost and the green bar is the FT there that are embedded in those budget costs. Next slide. And this is increasing all service levels one level from where they are. Well, obviously you're not reinvesting in optimal service to go beyond that. But anything that's below base, base or mid would, would shift up one level in this scenario. Again, blue bar is the budget cost and green bar is the FT that are embedded in those options. Next slide. You will be having a work session with Deb Galardi. We've invited the Water and Light Commission to join you in a, in a joint meeting on February 16th. Let me just mention a couple of things that have occurred over the last couple of months to help set some context. The Council did review a proposal to fund additional EMT firefighter, EMT positions to allow the city to, to deploy additional ambulance. You saw an initial proposal that was subsequently updated with new revenue information. And through ground emergency medical transport and revenue, ambulance revenue that we're not collecting when we have a private sector carrier backfill for us, we're able to fund those new positions with those, with those sustainable revenue sources. And so those, those costs do not compete for the dollars that you're looking at tonight in terms of the investments in services or potential investment in services. So, so with, with this as background and orientation, let me hit a couple of other things. Most, but not all of the recommendations do include, do include staffing. Again, we're a staff driven organization and most of our outwardly facing services are provided directly through staff, although sometimes by, by contract services. We also want to note that there, there may be times and places in some of these proposals where we would have to accommodate additional workspace or building work to, to handle new staff. We felt like it was probably too speculative to include not knowing the timing or the, or the, the numbers which you might land on. So while we think these are order of magnitude and fair numbers, they may not include all of the detailed costs for moving service levels forward. We want to note that large scale future capital improvements are not included in this. These are ongoing, hourly facing services. For instance, if we were to renovate or build a new public works facility, as you look at the MAC PAC recommendation that's coming to you next month, there, you know, this is not a tool that would forecast how those capital facilities would be constructed. We, we do have a core service that identifies additional investment in maintaining existing facilities. We also want to note that central services, IS, finance, HR, et cetera, based their analysis on their existing staffing levels and workloads. As we increase the size of outwardly facing departments, that often drives to demand for those internally facing services. And, and so at some point, investment in central services will need to be made as well. Finally, there are, I, services identified that we're not currently providing. For instance, a centralized emergency manager, facilities and fleet manager. Those have been identified through a variety of means, including the strategic plan as gaps for the organization. And so we've, we've incorporated the prospect of investing in those new services as part of this work. At this point, I would be happy to answer any questions you have about the presentation tonight, as well as any questions you might have about the staff report or about the attachments that, that support the staff report. Again, we're not asking for a formal direction tonight, although to the extent there, the Council can come to, the Council and Budget Committee can come to any consensus about sort of the general philosophical approach that you would like to see as you is moving forward. This really is to just help inform the conversation next month about how much revenue you ultimately want to be able to incorporate in, again, primarily into the general fund. And, and while this is not a budget proposal, it does help us set the stage for presenting a budget that meets your needs and meets your priorities. And so with that, I guess I'll just, I'll ask Amanda to clear the shared screen and then I'll turn it back over to the Mayor to facilitate any Q and A or any discussion amongst the body. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. I think one thing that I would ask you to do initially is one of the last statements you talked about was the increase in our EMT staffing and that we have that covered. Can you go over the number of EMTs that we're going to do and the, the cost to the budget? I'm not sure all of our budget members were a part of that discussion. So just to kind of get that off the table, what that's looking like?
I actually am going to, I think that Chief Lightford is in the council chambers or at least on, oh, he's in his office on Zoom. I'm going to turn that over to Rich. He's going to have a much better command of the, of the details. And so I'll jump in, Rich, if you need me to, but otherwise I'll, I'll let you answer the question as the Mayor posed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, in our, in our present, actually it was a, as a staff report that I presented to Council a few months back when Council made the decision to move forward. There were six positions, firefighter, paramedic positions that were to be funded with a variety of options because we did not know the GMT funding strategy. They came in at a cost of $840,000 annually. And, and there was one refurbished, or one ambulance to be refurbished in the initial startup cost. Originally, when my, I didn't want to make an estimate on the GEMT dollars. That was what I expected because I just didn't know what the state formula was going to be at the time. State has come out with their formula and we should be bringing in at least $800,000 in GEMT money this year from, from July, January 1st, for, for January 1st through December 31st. And that number should be continuous based on our Medicaid call volume that we have through the YCCO and some of the other community care organizations. So that $800,000 combined with the 130 or 160,000 in recovered revenues that we anticipate when we're fully staffed and running, more than cover the, the cost of the six positions that we have asked the Council for.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from especially Budget Committee members on that? Chris?
Mayor, if I could, if I could say there also is a question in the chat. So we can either go to Counselor Channell with, or I can answer the chat question. But I just want to let you know that somebody asked a question there too.
Okay, let's go to Chris first and then Jeff, if you could handle the chat.
So Chief, good evening. I'm curious, how many, how, how short are we currently? How long are we looking until we, we get up to not just the, the, just to the, to get up to regular staffing before the six we've added? And how long before we're going to see the other six added?
So we have three personnel in pocket on the, out of the five vacancies we had, starting today. We have two more finishing up psychological evaluations next week. That'll put them, the five vacancies that we had prior to the new will be, will be filled by the end of February, mid-February, they have to give their notice of their current positions. We are running a process currently for the six new positions. February 17th will be that process. We anticipate having individuals eligible to start by the first of April or mid-April, those six positions, the new ones.
So when do you think, based on that schedule, when I, you know, you've, you've, you've asked for and received a state of emergency, at what point do you, how long out do you think that's going to have to continue?
I don't expect the state of emergency to expand past, we're hoping to revert back to normal staffing by no later, my hope is, than mid-February. A large part of our current issues with our state of emergency are due to COVID exposures and, and illnesses that, and we have several individuals out on injury that are long-term injuries. So that's what's, what's put us into the position for the state of emergency.
And, and what's the timeframe on recouping those that are on long-term or injury?
First of February, we have one. We have one coming back the 17th of this month. We have two that are unknown, still, still awaiting for orthopedic feedback. So some of those we, we don't know for sure.
Okay, but basically we, we should be basically whole, you're saying, middle to late February and then toward the end of March, April, having the add-on that we've asked for?
Yeah, so those, those new six will be in the door around that timeframe. It'll take a month or two to get them to operate independently. But, so it may be, they'll be hired and working, but until we can release them to operate independently, it'll, it might be a little bit later than that.
All right, thank you for your answers.
Certainly.
Okay, again, I just wanted to get that out of the way that, so the budget members knew. We did do a state of emergency last week, given the, the parameters of our illness and injury. So let's just open it up to the Budget Committees and members of the Council, talking a little bit about this core services.
So Mayor, let me answer the question that was in the chat was, oh, excuse me. Essentially, why did we focus on top 25 and top 50? Reminder that we ended up with about 150 total services that we ranked top to bottom. I encouraged you to think of it back in September as a large exercise in setting a, the NCAA basketball tournament, which is where you get 64 teams. And there's a lot of argument about the last four in and the first four out and a little bit of argument about who seeded what. But generally, there's sort of core agreement that you have the, you know, the right things in the right order. And so, you know, we're not going to say that, you know, 12 shouldn't be 18th or 15th shouldn't be 30th, but we think we're pretty close on the top 25 and the top 50 and the top 100. There was no magic about picking 25th, 25 and 50. They were just sort of easy round numbers to pick. And it frankly captures the, the bulk of what we do in the general fund and the, and what people tend to think of as general fund services. And the further down the list you get, the more specialized and, and sometimes smaller the services are. And, and a number of departments did, you'll see as you look through the entire document, did identify the possible costs for services beyond the top 50. But we felt like that was a good starting point and we also just felt like we wouldn't have the staff capacity to do all of that work for every single service, especially when we know that we're talking about a limited amount of resource. We're not expecting all of the resources to be able to move everything to the optimal level. That was never part of the exercise. And, and we know that in using the core services, it will force us to sometimes make some hard choices about what services we fund and what services we don't fund, what services we provide and what we don't. So we focused on the, the top end of the, the services as opposed to the full list. I hope that helps.
And just to remind everyone, again, this discussion is around core services and to give some direction as we prepare for our later meetings. So again, any questions of Jeff or staff? Peter?
Yeah, hi, thanks, Jeff. Good report. I, I assume this, but I figured I'd better ask. The numbers that were on the graph where you did, you know, all the top 25 down through the 50, I'm assuming the, both the dollars and the FTEs are ongoing. It's, it's the money in the FT is to get you up where you want to go, but then we have to support it going forward, correct?
I would say that's the case for most of it, although not necessarily. There are one-time investments that are incorporated into some of those recommendations. If you, you know, if you have to staff up and buy equipment, that doesn't, that, that equipment doesn't necessarily become an annual cost, for instance. So, so there are one-time or, or, or costs that would, that would not be equivalent every, year after year. Although the, because the bulk of our general fund in, in specific is, is related to staffing, most of those are carrying costs. So we could, we could take a shot at identifying where some of the one-time costs might be. I think it's fair to say that the majority of the costs are, are probably ongoing, although it doesn't require an equivalent increase every year once you make that investment. So, you know, if you, if you have to invest $2 million to move the top, the, the below base services in the top 25 up, it's not an additional $2 million the next year. It's, you, you end up with the, sort of the incremental cost increases moving forward. So does, does that help on, on that?
Yeah, it does. And, and I understand about, yeah, but the base budget would go up to $2 million bucks. You would start at a $2 million higher base budget the next year.
Sure, yes.
Yeah. I'm not worried about it. I just, I wanted to be clear.
Yes, and was there a second part to your question that I missed there, Peter?
That's it. It, it, it's both FTEs and dollars, so it's.
Correct. And then I think, do you mind, Mayor, if I just manage a few folks ask questions? So it looks like Cherry is up first and then Debbie?
Go ahead, Cherry.
I was navigating the unmute process. Although I was reasonably familiar with what we have been doing in this evaluation of the core services, but I'm a little uncomfortable that I haven't heard any way for us to validate the internal staff assessment of what the level of services are that we're providing. In other words, do we have any way of, or have we done any validation of what we think base level services are or below base? And how do our residents evaluate what we think are base level services? And the reason that's important is that we're going to raise utility fees by charging more for services that we think are terrific and our constituents say, not so fast. You know, I think it's, it's important in the process somewhere to get some validation of what our internal staff thinks is good versus what our constituents think is good.
So, so I think some of that information is there. Now, we did not, this is not, this has not been an exercise in identifying how we compare to other jurisdictions or other communities. So we haven't done that. That doesn't mean that some, either best practices or common practices weren't used to inform the department heads as they, as they made these assessments. But we do try to describe in the narrative of the core services, what service would change and how it would be improved as investments are made. So we, we would like to think that that information is there. And certainly when we get to the point of making specific budget recommendations, we would be able to do that at a, at a more discreet level than for all of the core services. Because again, we're not under any illusion that this is an exercise in reinvesting substantially in everything that we do as an organization, but really trying to set some priorities. So I, I think some of that information ought to be there in the narrative. And we can also provide additional information moving forward as the, as the Council and Budget Committee would like us to do. Debbie?
I suppose this is more of a comment than a question and it might be the companion to what Cherry said in some ways. But I am certain there are things infrastructure wise that we need to be better as an organization and the insiders will understand those. But I also found myself more drawn to those things that I think would be an easier sell to the public. So if the library is now open 50 hours, it can be open 70 hours. That we can prove that now the parking lots are cleaner and safer. Because when we do bring on more revenue sources, it may be an easier sell in my book. If we can have a list of some of those things that we can say to folks, you'll notice the difference here, here and here.
Thank you. Counselor Channell?
Thank God, know how to use a computer. Sorry.
This is a judgment-free zone.
Yeah. So several questions. First, how much are we paying Deb Gilardi?
I can't remember right off the top of my head. Jennifer, do you, do you know what the, I, I'd forgotten what the contract cost is?
I, I don't remember as a data point, but I can pull it and put it in the chat later in the meeting. I'll just look for a contract. Does that work?
That works or email it to me. Either way, I just, I'd like to have that information. We seem to pay for an awful lot of consultants. The, the next question I, or comment I'd like to make kind of in reference to what Cherry had to say, Cherry had to say, I'm, I'm a little concerned also along the lines of selling this to the constituents when we already did a poll back in March of last year and they made it clear that they didn't want to spend any more money on services. We, we need to have some easily definable gains, losses that they're going to experience if funding isn't increased, if we, in, if this is going to be sold to the constituents. So that's, that's just kind of a comment in, in backing up that question and statement. The, the other thing that I'm curious about, and I should have asked this when we first went through the core, but who defined and what was the criteria that defined base, 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 below base, mid-level, optimal? Where did these definitions for those categories and who defined those terms? That was a staff-driven exercise. We, we tried to think of some, we, I mean, we tried to noodle a variety of ways to sort of bring the information forward in a way that was understandable. And so we used our, our best professional judgment to try to assess those services based on both historic levels of funding and, and what we see as needs in the community. We also compared services we were providing to those that seemed to be aspired to by the Council and in, in the strategic plan. Okay. And then I've asked for this before, but one of the things that would, I think, be helpful in all of this is what revenue would be required to just maintain, if any, just maintain current services? And what would be lost if we didn't get any revenue? In other words, where would we have to make cuts in order to bring the budget to balance if no added revenue were brought to us? If, if, if any cuts were actually needed, if we, if we weren't able to just maintain current services as it sits?
Those kinds of pieces of information would be really nice to have.
Well, so in part, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a dynamic exercise. So the, you know, the answer is going to change year by year based on conditions and costs and what revenues are available. But generally speaking, you would have, you would see the sorts of reductions that we made, uh, primarily on a temporary basis in the current year become longer-term reductions. Um, so as opposed to, you know, furloughing a third of our employees for about five months, we would potentially be faced with layoffs, um, to, to maintain in a, a sort of a no new revenue circumstance. Um, we've done our best to try to identify sort of the ongoing goal. And, and we really do think it's roughly about $2 million a year. Again, it's going to be plus or minus because some of our costs increase more quickly and more slowly. And I mean, not everything increases the same amount every year. Uh, and so in a higher inflation year, you're going to see that gap bigger than a low inflation year. Um, um, so, uh, in part, that's how we go through the, the budget exercise every year is to, is to try to make those things match up and to explain what the dynamics are. There's no, um, you know, there's no formula that tells us we're going to have exactly X amount of dollars and Y amount of expenses in a given year. And I know that's not really what you're asking, but you know, if you, if you ask me to forecast what the budget is, I'll tell you that I'll, I'll know a lot better in four months when we give it to you. Because anyway, that's, it really is an annual exercise where we take a look at all of our needs and all of our resources and, and do our best moving forward. Uh, it, it, it's, it's clear to me that we'll be on a, a trajectory to reduce services if there's no new revenue. And I think that the current year's budget was a pretty clear indication of that.
Yeah, it's just, saying that doesn't mean a lot, right? Providing real honest, um, um, I mean, not honest, I don't mean to say that we're not being honest, but real clear, we're going to lose this many hours. We're going to lose this service over here. This is going to go away. If we don't see some increase in revenue, it is, is, is much easier to work with than, um, we're going to have to cut back, you know, one day a week worth of employees. That, that doesn't really translate out to anything practical that, that, that our constituents can understand that it, it, when we're trying to express this to them. Cause I mean, I can tell you, the people I'm talking to don't understand why we need revenue at all. So I, I, it, it, it would be helpful for me to be able to provide some basis in, in those explanations. And I've, I've kind of beat this dead horse, so I'll, I'll let it go and let others talk. Thank you.
Counselor Chinoweth, I just wanted to note that the contract with Deb Gilardi is just shy of $30,000.
Thank you, Amanda, for getting that. Let's go up to Allison.
Also just, um, uh, qualify that, uh, in addition to bringing this, uh, utility fee forward, she's also doing a rate analysis, uh, for our, our wastewater fund, which is something she does every year or two. And so, um, that, that entire cost isn't, uh, isn't about the utility fee. It's in part a, a rate review for our existing utility. Allison?
Hello. Hello, everyone. I, I have lots of questions, so I'll try not to, but maybe I'll go in too many directions at once. But, um, first of all, I just want to say on the levels, I, I could understand the levels quite well. And I thought they were quite well done. If I took as a reference, human resources, which I know well, I have no idea how Kylie does what she does. Um, and I could understand that she, what she was saying, that this is where I'm at and this is what it would take me to get to the next level. So I completely understood the levels and I could accept that if they were true for human resources, they were probably true for every other level, uh, you know, the, the assessment the staff has done. So I actually thought that was really well done. I will say that I was a bit shocked by the findings and perhaps I hadn't paid proper attention before, but I don't think a city really aims at 88% of its top 50 services being at base or below base. I mean, so in my opinion, there's nowhere to go but up. Because I think, you know, operating at mid-level is probably the minimum one should expect from a city. So I think that getting there is probably essential. Then I have a question about, and no criticism involved here, and here's a question. And, and, and I'm really not asking a critical question. I'm asking because I don't want to make the same mistake going forward. The decision-making that got us to this place, you know, over the years, nobody aims in a city to get 88% of its top 50 core services at base or below base. So they aim for it to be mid-level or optimal. So somewhere along the line, decisions were made to defer spending, to live on what you had, to not raise money, to cut costs. And this is where you end up like this. So I'm trying to, to look going forward when we evaluate raising money, that we want to get to a better place. Because the, the alternative is to go down, in my opinion, slowly, but surely downwards. So, uh, what I'm asking you, Jeff, what do you think went into, to council and budget and other decision-making that got us to this place? And then finally, this is completely different nature, but when we're looking at the FTEs increases, did we look at things, uh, do they include fringe? That's one question. And, um, did we look at the very difficult hiring environment? And whether we might need, you know, how we're going to approach that? There are a lot of FTEs there and the incentives. And did we also include the massive increase that we think is coming in PERS? Sorry for all those things at once, but I thought I may as well, I have your attention. I may as well ask my questions.
I'll try to get them, uh, as well as I can. If I miss something, um, I trust they'll remind me. Uh, we did our best to include full carrying costs. So yes, uh, fringes, uh, forecasts, I mean, we, you know, we're not forecasting every year's carrying costs forward. So we have to deal with that in, in coming budget years. But, uh, we, we did do a solid best effort to, to identify the true cost of elevating the services and, and not say, oh, by the way, there's this other 30% we have to tack on. So all of the, all of the costs that we could fairly identify, with the exception of some potential capital improvements, we did build into those, um, those what-if scenarios. Um, uh, again, uh, you know, future PERS increases, a future increase. So we didn't, you, we didn't budget that because that's something that you pay in the future. Uh, but those things are out there for sure. You know, I, the, part of the, the, part of the setup you heard from me early in the discussion was that, you know, this is a circumstance that has occurred over the course of the last nearly 30 years in most jurisdictions in Oregon. Um, I am not going to tell you that, uh, previous councils and city managers made bad decisions. I think they made the best decisions they could make with the information they had in hand at the time. I think that this is a community that has long focused on affordable public services that make the community proud. And the reality is that we are in a system of funding local government, cities in particular, primarily with property taxes in a way that, um, the voters in four counties chose to limit back in 1990. And the, the people who live in all 36 counties are living with the result of that 30-plus years later. So the system has taken us to the place, um, that we are right now. I think that those impacts were masked in McMinnville and, and a handful of other communities around the state uh, by what was really robust growth for a long period of time. For 20 of those 30 years, McMinnville grew very rapidly. And the growth, um, also generated the kind of revenue that would support services on an ongoing basis. Um, and, uh, old buildings got old and, um, costs started to increase and revenues started to flatten and we stopped growing. In the last 10 years, we didn't grow very much. We were one of the slowest-growing cities in the state the last decade. So, uh, it, it's, the, the, where we are now is, you know, in my mind, it's more where we are and how do we move forward as a community? And, and I spend less time sort of, um, is, have less time and really no energy trying to second guess, uh, what if, or, you know, could something have happened differently? Uh, again, I think that, um, over the course of my career in Oregon, McMinnville has always been highly regarded as a great place to live, a great place to work, uh, with a lot of people who care about it. I believe that has been the case for a long time and is the case today. And we are just, you know, we're at a point in time where a lot of these sort of mega trends, um, have come to the point where, um, you know, we're dealing with this issue now. One member of the budget committee, actually it wasn't a member of the budget committee. He's a member of the community that I was talking to a, a month or so ago, who said, well, why now? Why McMinnville now? And I said, because we were lucky and we did smart things for longer than a lot of other communities did. I mean, there, there have been communities dealing with these issues for, for nearly 30 years. Um, uh, you know, I was in Springfield for 17 years, working at the city for nine. We cut budgets in seven of the nine years I was there. Uh, we reduced the total FTE in that organization by nearly 25% in the three years following the 2008 recession. Um, and communities like, um, uh, McMinnville and a handful of others were fiscally very prudent and we had really large reserves. And, and we didn't lose the kind of, um, service and the kind of staffing levels that other people lost after the 2008 reception. We were recession, we were one of the few communities that was relatively stable. We lost a small number of positions over the course, uh, of, of the few years following the recession. And we've, in some cases, been able to invest back. And in some cases, we still have, have not regained that ground. So that's sort of all I'm going to say in, in kind of retrospect. But did I get most of what you asked, Allison?
Yes. I, I mean, what my point here was, again, also not in asking to go backwards, but in not being timid to go forwards to raise the level. I, I want to, I want to raise the level. Uh, that, that's really my, my reason for asking. And I think if one keeps making decisions about deferring maintenance or not investing in people or services, this is where you, this is where you go. So I think we have to do something differently, which you so well presented to us, in order to raise additional revenue, to be able to put in place rising from base to mid, which I would like to see happen. That's my feeling.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm glad I was able to hit most of your checklist. Uh, it looks like Wendy's next.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, I want to agree with, I mean, everybody that's spoken so far. I mean, Allison saying for this week, I mean, we can go up since we're so low on so many of these base levels. And, and I'm all for the core services, but also to, I believe it was Debbie's point, a lot of our, uh, the, the residents did vote not to increase core services. So a lot of my questions in this comes from the utility fee. So I've got three questions. Um, is the utility fee going to be voted on by the people? Are they going to understand what it's for and why it's going to be implemented and what it's going to be used for? And then to that, would you explain kind of what the process would be? I, I can't, I'm not clear if this utility fee has passed. Has it passed yet?
So it has not. And in fact, I can't answer that question because Deb Gilardi will be presenting to you a, a, a variety of options to implement a utility-based revenue stream. And so the, the, the what, what is it and how does it look? And how much is it, um, are all questions to be answered, at least to be, to begin to be answered at the work session in, uh, February.
In February. Very good. Okay.
And, and so this is sort of the need or the expense side of the equation. And that's the revenue, uh, or support side of the equation. And I think it's all of our jobs to be able to explain to the community why and what. Um, it's, it's our expectation that, uh, based on the direction we've gotten so far, that the council will consider an administrative implementation of, of this fee. There is no requirement, uh, for the fee to be sent to the voters. Um, it's, uh, up to the policy body to make those kinds of decisions though.
And then one last, maybe it's just a silly question, but why is it being called a utility fee when it looks like it's going mostly towards hiring staff?
Well, it's a utility surcharge, for lack of a better term. I mean, that's the, the typical, uh, language that's identified. It's, it's, um, we're calling it a utility-based fee at this point because we haven't really landed on whether it's a surcharge or whether there's some other specific methodology that would generate the money. But it'll be raised from utility customers. Um, and, and, uh, just to reflect back on, um, some of the information that we provided to you, there, there was a, a, a pretty in-depth, uh, a couple of pretty in-depth descriptions about how, um, these, um, these funds can be utilized in, in communities. And, and it is, it is in fact a discretionary revenue, um, that cities, that, that cities can implement. Uh, some cities have implemented fees and earmarked them for specific purposes. Others have used them for general purposes.
So once it's in and we're charging it, it's just always going to be charged? It might just rotate as to what it's being used for? It's an, it, it's just an automatic additional source of revenue for the city?
Yeah, our recommendation is, is, has been that you consider a, a general fund discretionary resource that can be, um, that can be both elastic in terms of how, um, the, the cost, the, the revenue increases over time as well as discretionary so that this body and its successor bodies can spend it as it sees fit on general, on a broad range of general fund services.
Awesome. Thank you for the rundown. Good clarification. Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. Uh, Counselor Hiri?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Happy New Year. First one. Uh, good discussion. I can start with a couple of responses to some initial thoughts and threads in my attempt to condense, um, some liquid out of the vapor of the nuance of the discussion here. Um, my sort of overall Cliff Notes where I stand and then a couple of specific questions. And I'll try and clip through all that as fast as I can. Um, uh, I think, um, the, the polling has been referenced a few times. Um, and cause I wasn't, I didn't have a great recall of it. I was able to pull it up and, and read through it again. And I think some of the confusion is that the, the punchline was murky at best. Um, and, but, but I do see that, you know, 58% of people would responded, yes, they would support the local option levy, which was, you know, not exactly what we're talking about here, but were supportive of it. And some of the punchlines at the end were, um, it's critical that we explain exactly what people get in order to achieve the success rates that we're shown if it were to pass. So I think it was down the line murky, murky at best. I don't read it as overwhelmingly no or overwhelmingly yes. It's more important, I think, polling from what I've heard some other people say, it's more important to explain what, what we're getting and why and what that translates to, to allow people to support it. And then there are the Cliff Notes of highlights of what's important to those people, um, who were polled and said yes, and, and what resonated the most with them. So perhaps rereading that as a refresher would be helpful. Um, I, I think, uh, um, overall, I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of, 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 of new revenue sources. And I'm looking more towards, uh, medium-high to high levels of service and increase, um, across the board. I think in order, you know, now with 10 years left on our Mactown 2032 strategic plan, if we don't do something to move the needle and increase our ability to deliver more and cool services, you know, what are all of us doing here so frequently and, and working on? I mean, it's just a little bit of like pack it up and go home. Um, if we're just going to not do anything, close the books and cut, cut people loose and, and start throwing up our hands and, and just shuttering doors. Um, so it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of how much is, is kind of where I'm positioned here. Um, to move to questions, um, the information that Deb Gilardi will be presenting to us next month, meeting or that, that meeting you, you referenced in February, are they presenting models that are going to align with your three scenarios that you guys have presented here? So sort of, you know, the, the dollar figures that you presented are a wide range and was super helpful to show the depth and breadth of those impacts. Is Deb Gilardi going to present information that's, that's in lockstep with those? Sort of if you did want to go to the, the highest one you presented in this scenario, here's what that would look like. Are they sort of presenting their own and it's for us to extrapolate or get more information from?
So we, we will work with Deb to try to strike sort of both of those things. Her, her, her task is to really, um, provide, um, uh, some options on methodology for generating additional revenue, um, not make recommendations for how much. But what we can do is we can ask her to have a scenario of, you know, if you want to generate a million dollars and you use this methodology, here's what the fee structure would look like. And so we can run several, we can have her run several different scenarios at different levels. So you could see what that, what those fees and charges would be.
I, I think, I think it would be helpful.
She's also, she's also going to look at it pretty broadly in terms of user classes. We've got three different utilities. We've got, uh, we've got commercial, industrial, um, and residential. and residential customers in all three utilities. We've got equity issues that we want her to address. And so she's going to be taking, we, 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 we expect a pretty holistic look at what those options could look like.
Yeah, I think that the how, how we get to the number is a whole nother discussion and how it gets broken up, as you say, in, in an equitable way. But I think I would find it helpful if her information aligned somewhat with the information you're presenting to us tonight. So if those numbers were, were, were in line or, or not surprising that we're talking about these levels and, and having a hard time converting her figures to these figures.
You can work with her to base her presentation sort of in the context of this information to, I, 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 I understand, I understand the concern. We can do that.
Okay. Early, uh, next question, early on in the, in the we need new revenue discussion was sort of, here's the current budget shortfall and, and then, you know, the furlough program. And I remember at that time, the, the number was presented to us, one point five, high one million dollar shortfall projected to grow to two, two-plus million dollar shortfall at the time of the new budget. Is that correct?
That is about right, Jennifer.
About right.
Do you have any, you have that information at hand or have any more specific recollection of the amount that we talked about?
No, I, I don't have those figures up there. It is just kind of generally looking over the last five years or more, a, a fairly persistent deficit of around two million dollars from a budget perspective. When the actuals come in, it'll, it typically comes in better than the budget perspective, but, um, so that's, that's what I'm, I'm looking at or, so, so getting us into kind of a, a steady state. I'm hopeful when we run our initial budget numbers for next year, we are looking at around two million dollars, which would include making, continuing to make progress on our, building back our reserves as well. So we'll, we'll see how all that shakes out. There just are so many moving pieces.
Got it. So, so let's call it two. If, if we think about that and look at the numbers you presented to us, how do, how do the numbers that you presented to us, the, you know, the two million for top twenty-five below base, the six million for top fifty below base movement? How does that, how does that two million dollar shortfall talk to those numbers?
So our goal was to base the investment in core services essentially where we were before we had to make the short-term reductions in the current year's budget. Does that help?
No, but I think that is the answer. So. Okay. The, and then last question is what does the road look like to getting something after that Deb Gallardi presentation? What, 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 what does, what does, what are the next steps after that look like insofar as timeline of getting this done?
In, in some cases, it, it may depend on the methodology that you choose, since we haven't seen her options yet. There, there may be different roads to travel depending on which approach you, you ultimately support. Our, we have been working as if a, a new revenue stream will start generating funds effective July one, however. So that's, that's been our presumption as we move forward, that we would build a budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, presuming new revenues. There actually was a question earlier that I, that just jumped back into my head and I don't remember if it was from Allison or it may have been from Wendy, but the, the reality is that, I guess it was Wendy who asked about the current hiring environment. It's tough to fill certain positions and I'm not under any illusion that, you know, if, if, I'm just going to make up a number. If you approved fifteen new FTE in next year's budget, there's zero chance that all fifteen of those people would be working on July one. Partly because you're not even going to take action on the budget until June and there's a, there's a time that's required to bring people on board. But the more aggressive you are about investing significantly in services and we are staffing up in key areas, we, we may not be able to spend all of that money in the first year, for instance. If you, if you say go hire forty-two people, I'm going to say, well, that's forty-two people on top of the hundred that we hire every year. Anyway, I'm making up numbers now. I don't want Kylie's head to explode, but the reality is we would have to map out those sorts of recruitments so that we're able to say, well, this is when we expect to be able to fill these kinds of positions. Some positions are easier to fill than others and it just doesn't really, you know, magically happen that folks jump out of the sky. So part of what we will do as we put together our budget presentations is we'll be realistic about how long it will take to implement those kinds of things. And we've already had a, a, a general discussion with some of our central services folks about, you know, realistically, if we're able to fill one, two or three positions, we're already sort of assuming that some of those positions won't be filled until three or six months into the fiscal year. So we'll take that sort of thing into account when we build our, when we build our work plans for the coming year. Thanks for letting me go back and check that box. Meredith, I think, or Debbie, were you next? Did you lower your hand?
I did. It was about the hiring culture right now, so you answered it without my asking.
Oh, super. Thank you. I think Meredith is next then.
I, I wanted to say that in my experience and my interactions with the city staff, I have been very impressed and I had really positive experiences with our city staff. And so when I go through all the core services and I see all these things that are below base, I wonder how that affects their morale and their work conditions. I feel like we're not giving our current staff, the staff or the funds, they need to do just even a base level of their job. And I want to keep our qualified staff. So when I looked at the list, I feel like a bare minimum would be to move the, any of the below base in the top fifty up to base. I feel like that's the bare minimum, in my opinion. I would love to see more things moved higher, but I feel like it's important that we start discussing where we want to move things up, you know, to give you guys more direction. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Minke?
Excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Generally speaking, I, I agree. We need, we, we definitely do need to do something about increasing things. I guess I'm a little concerned about the constituents too, so I'm going to kind of fall back on that as a concern. The thing that probably bothers me the most as we go through this process is, I mean, I grasp the concept of the utility fee. I guess I've always thought of this as kind of a two-step process. There's the utility fee and then we're going to do the districting. And up until fairly recently, I was thinking, well, as soon as the districting happens, then we're going to let go of the utility fee. But it's becoming very clear to me that that probably is not likely to happen. So I, more than anything else, I, my concern is how do we explain to the constituents how this two-step action is going to work? And I mean, we're really going to have to look at the positive here and, and do some tremendous selling. I, I guess basically that's my concern is, uh, how does this going to flow together? Have you given thought to that process?
I, I have. And, you know, part of it, we will have to figure out once we know where it is the body wants to go. And I mean, it's a different conversation if you want one million versus ten million dollars. I mean, those, those are two very different conversations and they have different staffing and service implications. And so, you know, one, once we understand where it is you want to go in terms of sort of the gross size of the budget, then we can talk really much more specifically about the service impacts of, of those revenues. The, I talked about this a little bit earlier this summer and this fall. The this revenue that we're looking at is intended to try to, to, to close the structural deficit that we have between a primarily property tax-funded organization that has limited revenue growth statutorily imposed and a system where expenses are not constrained. And so that's that. Revenues grow roughly three percent a year. Expenses grow roughly six percent a year. There's that six percent gap. And, and with or without a fire department that consumes a part of your levy, you still have that gap. That structural imbalance still exists. And so if you, if you transition the fire department to a fire district and you retain your levy capacity, you haven't made a systemic change. You've, you've created a one-time buffer in that unsustainable revenue stream. And so you've delayed the time at which you will have this conversation where you no longer have the revenue to support the services that you're providing. So, so that it's not an insignificant amount of money, but if you look at the graph where the lines cross or where you have sort of the cliff where you just don't have the money to make, to, to spend anymore, just pushes that out. It doesn't fix it. This utility-based charge has the prospect of actually fundamentally changing our, our growth curve for both revenues and expenses. It's, it's expected to be more elastic and it will generate, generate more revenue as the community grows. It's not going to be artificially held down like property taxes are. And the expectation is that revenue will grow more similarly to your expenses. And so you'll, you'll have a revenue and expense curve that close, that more closely tracked than the ones you have now. And a lot of that's really wonky and it makes my head sort of explode to talk too much about it. But there is that sort of reality that we have to be able to explain that you've got this, this gap that our current system doesn't fill. And this new revenue that you're looking at is a way to fill that. You also do potentially have the benefit of retaining that levy authority if you have a district in place and, and invest those monies in additional services or in existing services. So it's not money that you lose, but it, it doesn't fix that structural deficit. And so that's the, that's the difference. And so that's where it's incumbent on all of us to be able to explain, here's the service, here's what we hear you want, community. You want green parks, you want more bike paths, you want library services open, you want prompt response from your public safety services, you want the holes fixed in the road. All, you know, the things that people value in the community are, are primarily the things that we're talking about funding here through these, through these revenues. And so it's going to be up to all of us to explain what that investment of service is, is going to look like and what the community, how will the community be better? How will life here be better than it is now if we're able and willing to make these investments? Cherry's next. Well, did I get all your points, Kelly? Did that?
I, I think generally you did. I guess, I mean, I realize that along with this utility fee, it will gradually increase to, to maintain what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, there'll be a certain buffer period with the, if we do pass the fire districting situation, but probably not anything that's going to go beyond a few years would be the sound of it to me.
Well, in terms of, in terms of the property taxes, I mean, we have to be judicious about how we spend those. I wouldn't recommend try to spend the, the delta all in one year or in two.
No, 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 no. Salaries are going to increase and there's going to be things that just continue to go up.
True. That is true. Yes. Cherry is up next.
Yep. Thanks.
Jeff, thank you. I have three questions. I think that, so I come from a little city that has seventy-five percent of its revenues that comes from its utility fees and about thirteen or fourteen percent from property taxes. So we're just reverse of what McMenville is. And I totally understand and appreciate what Jeff is saying about the ability to increase utility fees because that's, your constituents will understand why you have to invest to maintain the services that they want. But I think there's another dynamic that's going on and I, and I go back to the staff rating of what are the base level or below base versus mid-range. And that is that as professionals and we all in our job want to be we all want to be the best and do the best for the people we're serving that we're capable of. But that isn't necessarily what our constituents are expecting of us. I think we need to balance what we as human beings wanting to be, do the best job we can with what are our constituents asking for us? And I'm sorry to come back to that, but I've never once had a resident of the city for which I am a treasurer come in and say, you know, I really would like you to get the bills out three days earlier than you have just because I could add an FTE and get the bills out earlier because that would make me feel great that I'm getting it out on the eighth of the month instead of on the fifteenth of the month. And I apologize, Jennifer. I know, I, I'm not, and Jeff, I'm, I'm not taking to task the staff estimation of what they feel they need to do to do a good job. But that's why I come back to what are our constituents saying that they think is important? You know, to get some kind of feedback from them. But I wholeheartedly support the desire to incorporate more utility revenues. And I guess I was not really understanding, are we, are, is Water and Light a financial part of the city that we're going to take over? Kind of demonstrating my ignorance here. I always thought they were an independent entity with their own board of directors and they made their own decisions about their finances. And I'm a little unclear as to how we think we're going to leverage off their ability to raise rates to help us raise our revenues.
Well, we're not asking Water and Light to raise rates. We're exploring the, a possible surcharge or additional fee that's, that they bill to utility customers. So we're not.
Like an administration fee?
Yeah. So we're not asking them to raise water rates and use that money to run the city. They are in fact a component of the city, technically department. And while, while they do have a governing board, McMenville Water and Light is a utility, it's a municipal utility established in the city's charter and is a, is technically a component unit of, of the city. So they do have a level of independence that other departments don't necessarily have. Did that help, Cherry?
I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Gardner?
Yeah, first I just wanted to thank everybody for the great discussion tonight. We've had a lot of great points on here. I agree with the majority of them in that if we're going to raise revenue, which it sounds like we are, that there needs to be a, a clear line of delineation on, on what our constituents are getting for that rate increase. And the other thing, kind of touched on Kelly's point and, and Jeff touched on it as well, is, you know, I think before we establish what this utility fee should be, we, we definitely need to have the discussion on what our intent is on our current taxing, the tax rate that we currently set aside for the fire department, if and when that goes to a district, because I think that changes the, the, the revenue discussion on this, on this utility fee. So, you know, if we're going to the voters with this utility fee and saying, hey, you're going to get this increased service level in the fire department by this utility fee and then we're, at the same time, when we pass a fire district, we're going to say, we're going to keep this dollar fifty-two that we're currently utilizing. That just has a, that at the very base level as the optics is we're double dipping in the city. And that gives me a bunch of concern. And from Jeff's point, if it's more sustainable to go to a utility fee than working off of a tax rate, I would like to have that discussion sooner than later and maybe go for a more aggressive utility fee with a commitment that when the fire district passes, we're going to walk away from that dollar fifty-two. If it's more sustainable to go that way, which is what I interpreted from Jeff a couple of minutes ago.
Oh, Amy?
Thank you. Kelly's question had, had me thinking that a different answer would come out of it. So I'm going to kind of clarify a little bit. She had kind of asked, what are we going to do to, to get the support and to sell this to the people? And I don't know that I heard like actual, what's the actual efforts we're going to do? Because you're saying if we, if this passed, it's all the, all the what-ifs, right? All the hypotheticals. If this passes. If this passes, if we get, if we all agree on this. And if it passes on the twenty twenty two twenty three budget, July first, we start collecting this fee. Does anyone know about this fee prior to July first? And is it a is it a mailer? Is it an article in the News Register? I think everybody would would get on board with it if they knew what it was for. And maybe not calling it like a utility fee, calling it like a city services surcharge. Or maybe something a little more transparent. I I think that's where I'm at is like I I want all these core services to be minimum base level. But I wanna get it honestly. I wanna get this funding and this revenue very honestly and very transparent from these people.
I I I take your point and I I didn't I didn't intend to suggest that nothing would happen until a new budget rolled out. But we don't know what we're communicating to the community until we get a policy decision about how much money you'd like to raise. And the service implications are different. So we we'd wanna make sure that, I mean, I think there's a truth in advertising. Argument that you're making here. I it's a different conversation if it's a million, if it's two million, if it's four million, it's a eight million. And and knowing where it is you folks want to be as policymakers. Allows us to craft both the services that could be provided by that. But could be supported by that new revenue and. Allows us all to make the case for here's why it makes sense. Here's here's this this action that the council took or is contemplating will allow, fill in the blank. And so that's part of why we went through this core services exercise is to be able to give examples of. If we make this kind of investment in this place, you're gonna see this impact on. You know, the parks are gonna be more green, there's gonna be more library hours, there'll be more rapid response for police and fire. I mean, all those kinds of things that we fund now, we can describe the impact of those dollars. Once we know generally what those what that dollar amount is. So, yes, you're right, we need to be talking about this from from, I mean, we have been talking about it. Sort of in a roundabout way, but we started this conversation in July in front of the community. And we have continued to do these meetings, I think, in a very transparent, a very public way. And you're right, we still need to be able to talk about what does this mean for the folks who live and work and play in the community? Uh Councilor Gary and then Councilor Peralta.
Jeff, did you talk to the mayor and did you give him the night off? Because you're running traffic control here, man, he's just taking a big lift. Couple, couple things. In response to some of those.
I did ask his permission before I started this.
The the in response to a couple of those comments, I think the big thing and and kind of where where I was of. Yeah, it's, you know, the the community is ready, we're we get it, everything's here, we just gotta communicate it. And and Wendy's been talking about, people are talking about it. I think the answer, Wendy, is what are we gonna do is we need to do all of those things that we've mentioned. And we needed to do ten times more things that we haven't mentioned. And we just gotta, we gotta do, we gotta do it all. We gotta do all the letters, all the outreach, all the things. We just gotta come up with what that messaging is or all of the messaging and and do all that. The old quote from my dad is kicking around my brain, though, how do you, what's the best way to starve a horse? Assign five people to feed it, right? If we all just assume we're all someone else is gonna do it, no one's gonna do it, the horse dies. So I think we just need to take a moment and and we on this group need to need to, you know. Be really intentional about what we are going to do and who's gonna do what and how and when. So. But the also other on the other end of that, the other cheesy one that I think about is if you sit down at the poker table and can't spot the sucker, it's you. So I guess maybe this speech means I'm gonna be starting writing some articles and stuff like that. But um so so, yeah, we need to do all of that and explain it. I guess the other piece of that is is what Adam brought up. How to, when when do we have the conversation about the structure of what we're currently charging for the fire district? And and what will happen to that if it goes to district and when? That's the kind of, other than what we're talking about here and what the rate will be, that's the other big piece that is unknown to me. So Jeff, are you able to take a stab at what the sequence of be, when when would be the time to have that conversation? I know from the last time we talked to the consultant, it's the district may be farther out than the rate. And so we may have a funny looking cart and horse. But when do we have that conversation and what's the sequence?
Yeah, so I think you're gonna be faced with the rate, the the utility, the the community service fee. For lack of a better term, sooner than you'll be faced with the decision on the district. Uh I do think you'll be moving forward, you know, roughly parallel in those two arenas. I think one of the reasons we have been on the path to create a district, well, there are two primary reasons. One is to stabilize the service and to consistently provide the service over a larger area for more people. Spreads the cost of that important service more broadly and allows it to be funded more sustainably over time. And you currently control those costs. I guess my perspective is that if you want to control costs for the fire department, you shouldn't be pursuing a district. Because you will lose that control. There'll be a a new board in place that that's in charge of funding that district. And that initial levy is gonna be the primary. Amount of support for that district. But, you know, managing the the fire department will transition to a new elected body. And it's there, there's nothing fundamentally wrong with that. You just have to understand that that body won't be you anymore if you're the city council. And that budget won't be subject to budget committee review if you're that budget committee member. I don't think that it's in the city's long term interest to simply eliminate the tax authority that exists now. Because you do have what is still fundamentally an unsustainable revenue and expense dynamic. And while this utility charge or this community service fee goes a long way towards helping. It doesn't fix all of the ills that exist in the system. And it won't be, this won't be the last council or budget commission committee in the history of McMinville. That has to have a challenging conversation about budgets and revenues and expenses. And I I frankly think that to to simply say, we will contract, we will allow this fire department to go into a new district. And we will completely eliminate the discretionary general fund taxing authority that that department consumes. Doesn't do you any any immediate benefit other than perhaps politically. I mean, it makes the cost of services cheaper, but you can't fund anything with that cost that you with that authority that you no longer have. So you're you you just have to remember, you're spending that money now, you're spending it on fire service. If if you have a district in place, you're not spending it on fire service. But are you gonna suggest to me that there is no, there is no great need for that that those monies? I actually think you may not need it immediately and you may not need it in the short term. But over the medium and the long term, the one of the reasons to consider a district is to maintain that taxing authority. To better support the remaining services that we have.
Understood. I guess my only end with my, I think that I think that's a bigger conversation and how it all plugs in. On 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 what we do and don't do. I I don't disagree with anything you said. I just think maybe germane to, you know, the next steps in the staff report is what information you'd need from us or on what further information is needed. I would say further information is needed on on choices and sequencing before I'm able to decide on this service. On on having that discussion as part of Deb Gollardi's information on the rate, what that's gonna be. And how we're gonna move these services forward. Okay, what are we gonna go move everything from below base to base, move everything in the top fifty up one? Coupled with that, the third thing I would need to to help is to that have that conversation on what we're gonna do and what the possible mechanics are and what the benefit is. Keep it in place, but pause the charging of it for a few years, charge it for a few years, pause it after that, that all that kind of stuff. You know, I think because we're so close to hitting our head on that taxable ceiling, but also staring down the barrel as. Staff report also indicates of major capital needs, Mac Mac Pac, public works, facilities, all that other stuff is we 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 do need room. In that in there to do those things too. So. That would be my part of the next steps is is more information on that as part of making a final decision on all this.
Yeah, we we can keep bringing that kind of information forward. Councilor Peralta, you had your hand up earlier, but not any longer. I didn't wanna lose you if you had a question or comment.
Yeah, I do have a comment, thank you, Jeff. I just lowered it. But thank you for recognizing me. I, first of all, really appreciate the staff and also everybody who has taken the time to go through the packet. This was a lot of material to cover and not a lot of context for understanding it. I frankly felt pretty overwhelmed by the. By how we were trying to make decisions around the packet. So listening to the conversation really kind of helped me a lot tonight. I guess the two comments that I have are that I do agree with, I think it was Zach and Adam primarily, that were. Commenting on the need to tighten. As we move forward to just tighten up the transition as we hand off. The taxing to the fire district. Because I just don't think, I don't see us just increasing the rate a dollar fifty or two dollars or whatever it is for the fire district. And having that not offset somewhat against the the existing city property taxes. The the, I guess the one thing that I'm struggling with still a little bit. Is the assumptions, trying to wrap my head around the assumptions about the rate of increase. Rela- in cost relative to revenue. Because I feel like the last few years since I've been on council, we've taken numerous steps to. Uh address shortfalls in different departments, going to a hundred percent cost recovery in some places. Increasing, you know, the sewer fee. And so I do feel like we've done a lot to address a lot of the revenue shortfall that we've been experiencing in the last few years. And yet I don't, it sounds like just listening to it, that hasn't necessarily made its way under the assumptions. Because, you know, there's just sort of like, well, we're about two million under every year. And I just, I just don't. I I'm just concerned that that we're sort of underestimating the work that we've done in the last couple of years to. To sort of correct some of these imbalances. I see we're running out of time and two councils have more to say, so I'll set it aside there. But thank you for giving me the mic.
Thank you, Councilor Garvin.
And we are about six minutes out. So if you could limit the last two comments and we could close up to be able to go to council meeting, it'd be appreciated.
Councilor Garvin. You're muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Uh moving back around to the taxing authority for fire, it wasn't my goal to try and control the the new fire district or anything like that. From a city perspective, I was more meaning if it's more sustainable to operate. Uh from a utility fee revenue stream, like you mentioned, after Kelly's question, Jeff, was. I feel now's the time to have that discussion about what we're gonna do with that dollar fifty two. And if it's gonna be more sustainable to take a larger bite from a utility fee perspective. And not levy that dollar fifty two on the citizen for five years or ten years or two years or whatever that is. Now would be the time to have that holistic conversation and and not just say, hey, we're just gonna have that conversation when the district passes.
Fair, fair point, I understand, I better understand, thank you for that clarification. Councilor Drabkin.
Thank you. Uh there's just a couple of points that I wanted to tie together based on the conversation this evening. Uh one thing is that in looking at these two different potential revenue streams. There's been the, I've heard a lot of conversation talking about like, should should it be one or the other or discontinuation of one? Whether we would discontinue the utility fee or we would discontinue the tax levy. And that there, there was a comment made that this might seem as though it's double dipping. I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly who said that, but that terminology was used. And I'm wondering if really the presentation, the communication on this is more focused on this is the pool of resources. Or these are the the pools of resources that are needed. So that goes back to some of that conversation earlier we were having just about communication. I don't understand why we are juxtaposing the two in conversation and here if our outward communication with the public. Needs to be, these are additional revenue sources. And then when we look at our, so that's kind of point one, I hope it was somewhat clear. And then point, my second point kind of goes back to looking at this massive list of core services. And and maybe. You know, one of the issues we've had is the fact that we we've identified this just incredible, you know, hundred and fifty ish. Core services that's so much to undertake when. You know, the things that we're charged with as a city initially in our charter are, you know. McMinville Water and Light is already mentioned. Fire protection is specifically mentioned and then, you know. In terms of how we, what other services we provide, there's not a a lot that else that's delineated. Or maybe. The 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 offices of city manager and city recorder, I don't know if there's another office in there that's designed designated. But when we kind of take that that root base and then we look at everything that we've expanded to do. And I, you know, a lot of the like, Muni Court is way far down on the list. I don't remember where it is, but it's way far down. So and it also scored poorly. I know I'm a little all over the place, so I apologize to my co committee members and that. I'm just trying to get as, get all my thoughts out as quickly as possible. But I do think that there's some validity to both sides of this conversation, which are that. If we are offering this expansive amount of service, you know, we are this very full service city. Then. Yes, it's going to, we shouldn't do it if we're not gonna do it well. I I am definitely supportive of that perspective, we shouldn't do it if we're not gonna do it well. So what we need to do next, I think those steps. You know, continue to be a conversation about our resources. Our budget constraints and it's not just a revenue conversation. I do think that there's also a lot of validity in evaluating monies, money spent. And I think that that's just a demand if we're talking about increasing our our budget by potentially ten million dollars. I don't think there's any way we can't not also evaluate current expenditures. And I'll get off before my time's up, thanks.
Well, thanks every member of the the budget committee for a great dialogue, keeping it focused towards core services. One thing that I'd like to just share in conclusion tonight, it's something that budget committee members have asked for. And I just want to reiterate that the process for the two thousand and twenty two twenty three budget will be different. We're not going to have mammoth. Sessions that go three to four hours, we're gonna split those into two hour sessions when we're going through the budget process. We're going to get the budget document out to you earlier. And lastly, we will have the participation of department heads in our discussions. They're always there, but we are going to have presentations by that. Those are the three things that I had on my list that we've talked about to enhance the budget process this year. And and have it more. I think it's going to bring a better product to us at the very end. So again, thank you, everyone, for great dialogue this evening. And let's go ahead and I will dismiss the combined, well, the budget committee meeting. And for those that are going to be going to city council, we'll go to the next Zoom meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. Have a good night.
It is seven oh one and we have just gone in, we've finished our discussion with the Budget Committee. Great discussion tonight. For those that weren't a part of that, we took our full hour and a half to discuss core services and moving forward. Again, thank those who participated in this. So I will go ahead and call the city council meeting of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two to order, recognizing this is our first meeting of the council in the new year. So I hope everyone had a great holidays and a new year. I'll call on Claudia to call, do a roll call. So Claudia?
Counsel Garvin?
Here.
Counsel Geary?
Here.
Counsel Minkie?
Here.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Present.
Counsel Peralta?
Here.
Council President Drabkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia. We will now do the pledge of allegiance. I didn't ask anyone, so I'll lead us in that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're to that point in our agenda this evening where we're going to be taking comments from community members, anyone that would like to speak on any other topic than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date may have this opportunity. And now your comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and your address for the record. Raise your hand in the Zoom feature if you'd like to speak and Claudia will call on you. So at this point, Claudia, any, any indication of comments from community members?
None that I could see, Mayor and Council.
Okay. If I, if I picked that up right, there were none. So that'll take us to advance, to advice and informational items this evening. And so I'm going to start with Kelly first.
Well, I didn't mean to knock myself out here. Hi, everybody. I've been traveling a great deal this last month, so I don't have a tremendous amount to report other than I am going to be leading the Visit McMinnville Committee. And I'm very pleased to hear my successor is from Ed Drabkin. So she will be the one who will be picking up that piece of information and reporting to you folks. I can report, we did have a YCAP meeting last month, just before the actual meeting and, our, our actual meeting. And there was a great deal of discussion about strategic planning, which is going on. I talked today with Elizabeth Winter, whatever, anyway, they're new auditor. So things are going well. They're extremely busy. In fact, the YCAP board has determined that they will be meeting on a quarterly basis from now on. Although I will still receive a monthly report, it may be less backed base as far as statistics and more story-based. So I just kind of give you that information as a lead on for what's going to happen in the future. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Chris.
I know this is going to be absolutely disappointing to everybody, but I have absolutely nothing to report.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been pretty quiet December for me as well. Getting going again on some meetings for new and old committee assignments as well as MacPAC, which will be coming to you soon to present our recommendations. So you'll be hearing a lot from me.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Adam.
Nothing new to report, very quiet December, but look forward to getting into some meetings here in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Remy.
Similarly, committee meetings were canceled. Thank you.
And Sal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of brief updates from council of governments. The annual meeting will be taking place on February sixteenth at six o'clock. And I hope that people have saw the COG connections on yesterday's COG connections. January tenth, there was a request to have folks from different jurisdictions to testify at the Oregon Transportation Committee meeting. I know, Mayor, you're likely to be there already on behalf of McMinnville, but if anybody else would like to testify on behalf of regional transportation, please just email me after the meeting. We'd like to organize, you know, maybe six or eight folks from the region in addition to the Parkway Committee to attend. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal. Let me go over a couple of things. Kelly indicated to you that she is no longer going to be serving on the Visit McMinnville Committee. And Jeff Knapp did such a good job of summarizing her service and to the board. And so again, we thank Kelly for her, for her long-tenured service on Visit McMinnville. With that, Remy, we're going to move her to Visit McMinnville to be on that board. And then at, at doing that, just because of her busy schedule, we're, we're going to take her off of the DEI Committee. And Zach has indicated that he'd be willing to represent the council on the DEI Committee. And so again, all of this was started with, you know, when Kelly was council president, she took a lot of opportunity to serve. And she's backing just a little bit away from that. YCAP's taking a lot of her time. Let me share with you tomorrow morning, Heather, myself and Remy are going to be going before the House Committee on, on Committee on Housing, talking about our inclusionary zoning, the bill that Representative Noble put before for us. And so we'll take that opportunity to meet with that House Committee. Murak did not meet in last, well, was it last week? But we are going to be meeting later in the month, so more to come from that perspective. Let me just share just a little bit. We did meet with the Newburg Dundee Bypass Committee. And we are really struggling a little bit. You know, three months ago, four months ago, we had so much positiveness with earmarks coming from the federal government and from ODOT. And then when the earmarks went away, we've lost twenty million dollars worth of support. We do have the thirty-two million that came from the governor and the legislature. That's all going to be put towards what is now being called two, two A, which is the intersection at two nineteen. But we're seeing about a twenty-five million dollar shortfall in right-of-way and some design before we can be shovel-ready on phase A or two B, which takes us to Rex Hill. So we've been in so many meetings with ODOT, with MWAC, which is the Midlam Valley Advisory Transportation Committee. I made a presentation there. And then next week, we're going to go to that same meeting that Sal had mentioned, the OTC's board meeting. Again, understanding that the Department of Transportation has about one point two billion dollars additional infrastructure dollars coming to them. And if we're going to be successful with the bypass, we need to get some of those dollars or it's going to, the bypass will be placed on hold, is our feeling. And so we're putting together all the things that we need to do from that perspective. The last thing that I have to report to you is you've seen for, not this week, but the two prior weeks, a police report talking about our camping situation. And the chief is going to continue to give us updates on a weekly basis as we talk to citizens so we know what's happening on that front. This week, last week, there was very little activity, so we did not receive a report. But that will be something that's coming to you on a regular basis, weekly basis. So with that, let's go over to department head reports. Amanda, I'll show you first.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to report to the council and for the public that the two settlement agreements on the opioid settlement have been signed. The decision date for the defendants to decide whether or not to move forward with the settlement has been extended to February twenty-fifth, I believe. Yeah, February twenty-fifth. So there's a little bit extra time, but the indication has been most jurisdictions are signing on and so the settlement should be moving forward.
Thank you, Amanda. Let's go to Heather next.
Good evening, Mayor. Counselors, nothing to report.
Thank you, Heather. Let's go to Ann.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Nothing too exciting to report in public works other than we are in the process of interviewing for the city engineer position and hoping to fill that position soon. And I'll report back once that happens.
Let's go to Chief Leibert. Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Couple of things to report on. The City of Amity, or this is not the City of Amity, but the Amity Fire District has been given their notice of our intent to withdraw from the agreement. We have been working through the process with them on phasing out. We're helping them work with SDO on what their options are as we move away from that partnership. So far, things have been going relatively well and we should be on track to probably meet our timeline and deadline that was given to them. We received notice, formal notice, well, the Amity Fire District will not be moving forward with consolidation efforts with us, nor will the City of Lafayette. So we're down to two, which is the City of McMinnville and McMinnville Rural. We had the consultant run some numbers, so we had some actuals based on those two departments, those two districts or department and district. And the numbers actually come out in a, in a more favorable manner than when we were in the larger concept. So the, I don't have the, the hard copies in front of me, but he indicated that the, we would be able to still manage a large portion of all of the gains, staffing gains and the, and the dollar gains that we anticipated at a, at a reduced tax rate. And I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it was, it's a positive information, I think, for a startup of the new district. We can focus our efforts on two and, and move through a process that will be a little more expedited than if it were involving four or six. And third, I know on this evening's agenda, you have the resolution for the emergency declaration that we've been working through over here. I just wanted to share the successes of our team working through this process over here and our firefighters and their willingness to, to, to take a pretty good punch in the gut and, and step up the plate and shift their entire lives around to, to make sure that we still continue to provide the services that is asked of us and doing an outstanding professional job of it. And I'm just very, so proud of, of our team over here and how they've managed these challenges that we've been facing here the last, last week or so. And, and we're, we're looking forward to getting back to a little normalcy, but I think it's going to take us a few weeks to get there. And that's my report.
Thank you, Chief. And if you could just share our, our support and thanks to the team, because this is trying times. It really is tough. So thank you. Let's go to Jenny.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Let's go to Kylie.
Good evening. I just have a couple of updates to share with the council tonight. I always like to let folks know what we have open for jobs. We do have quite a few full-time jobs available. We have a development customer service technician, a financial services analyst, firefighter paramedic, grant program manager, parking enforcement specialist, recreation program coordinator, and coming soon, a part-time librarian position. So lots of jobs open. If you know of anybody who might be a good applicant, please encourage them to apply. It is a tough recruiting market out there. Also want to share that we have two vacancies on our Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. We have one regular seat open and we have one youth liaison seat open. And on the Boards and Commissions page, there is information about how to apply for that. It's an online application, should be pretty easy to fill out. You can fill it out on your phone. It's through a Google form, so very, very easy to do. And then a friendly reminder to the Mayor and City Council to complete the performance evaluation for our city manager. Sent that out. That is due at the end of this month. I will be sending little reminders to you if you don't get that done. And so please try to get that done before the end of the month so we can adequately present a performance evaluation for Jeff in February. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. And thank you for your help on putting that together. We're still going to be working with the COG on that. But you're heavy lifting and trying to make that evaluation more manageable and more relevant. So thank you. Let's go to Jennifer.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. So I'm going to give a staffing update for, for my world. So I am just thrilled to have set a start date for a new municipal court supervisor position. A gentleman by the name of Jason Carvahal will be joining us the end of January. And he brings with him about a decade's worth of experience working in the Marion County Circuit Court. And we just are, we are thrilled to have him join us and help us with our work at the, at the local municipal court here for the city. Secondarily, we are moving forward with the finance, financial services analyst position, which is filling a current vacancy. And we got a nice group of candidates and are planning interviews for next week. So hopefully we'll have someone on board sometime in February to help bring our staffing levels back to our, to normal, which will be very helpful in this budget period that we're entering. Then the, the last thing about staffing is unfortunately, we've been having a really challenging time finding candidates for the ARPA grant manager position. So we may have to kind of rethink how we manage that program and the support that everyone needs for the various ARPA projects that we're wanting to kick into gear. So that's, I guess, my, my time has been focused on trying to get the right people in positions here to keep delivering our services. So happy new year to everyone and we're, we're going to have a good one here for 2022, huh?
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's go to, up at the Civic Center. Is Chief Skales there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Chief Skales is away at a conference and wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'm sitting in for him. Nothing more to pass along from the Police Department perspective than was already shared by Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. And let's go to Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Chenoweth raised his hand. I don't know if he has a question for Captain Simons, perhaps?
Go ahead, Chris.
No, just a comment I wanted to thank the Miami Police Department for giving me the opportunity to do a ride-along. I had an absolute blast from nine PM to one-thirty in the morning on a Friday evening. And if you haven't taken advantage of that opportunity, I strongly recommend it because it really gives you a good feel of what it really gives you a good feel of what our men and women in blue get to deal with on a Friday evening.
Thank you, Chris, for that report and reminder that we can do a number of those types of activities. Okay, Jeff?
Just really briefly, I don't usually spring things on, folks. I'm going to do it. Patty Herzog, I see you're in the meeting. Can you turn on your audio and video briefly, so I can introduce you to the council? She's going to kill me. So while she's frantically pushing the buttons, so Patty is the newly minted executive director of the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. Some of you have had the chance to meet Patty already. She actually moved to the community several months ago and has been learning a lot about both the community and the job. This is her first council meeting in her role, and you will get a chance to meet her officially when she comes to make an MEDP report. But as a strong partner in economic development, I wanted to at least give Patty the opportunity to say hi and for you to acknowledge that she is here with us this evening. Thank you, Patty.
Hi, Jeff. Thank you for the introduction and for the opportunity. Sorry, I can't put you on video. I'm using my cellphone as I do some other chores around the house. So you kind of caught me off guard there. My apologies. But thank you for the opportunity. It's just been an absolute pleasure getting to know everyone in the community and really looking forward to coming before the council and meeting you in person or virtually on screen in the Zoom format in the very near future. So thank you, Jeff. Looking forward to serving the community.
Thank you, Patty. She's already, I think she's two weeks into the job, and I know Jeff and I have had a lunch with MEDP, and I've had two opportunities to have monthly meetings with Patty and with John Dietz. And today, we had one that was, we took the, we took over an hour just to update the good things are happening from an economic development piece. And Patty brings such a strong level of experience and education, we surely look forward to working with her and what she brings to the table. And then Patty, I would just ask you, you shared with us today about an advancement that you've done within your office. I don't know if it's appropriate to do that now. If it's not, just say, I'll do it later.
Yes, yes, Mayor. I'd be happy to make that introduction. Over the course of this interim period at MEDP, Heather Hadley-Blake has filled in as the interim executive director. And in the last week, we made the announcement that she will be stepping in as the number two in command at MEDP, and her title is deputy director. So looking forward to working together to really bring those, you know, livable wages and support our traded sectors in McMinnville and support the development of our community.
Thank you, Patty, for sharing that. I just thought others would be interested in that. Jeff, go ahead and finish.
I am finished. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Again, a part of your packet is the October 2001 cash investment report, and so it's there for your looking at. The next item that we have on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda. We have five items on that consent agenda, and I would ask if there are any counselors that would request to have any items removed from the consent agenda and heard in its regular place in the agenda.
I need to abstain from two of the items, so I don't know if that requires them to be removed, or if I can just specify which two I want to abstain from.
And Amanda, how do we do that?
So Counselor Chenoweth, if you do want to vote on the other item, if you still want to make sure that you get a vote recorded on the other items, they would need to be removed. Otherwise, you'd need to abstain from the entire, the consideration of the entire consent agenda.
Then I would ask the two minutes be polled from the consent agenda, so they can be voided on separately.
Okay. Minutes. So items B and C, and so we will, we will pull those from the consent agenda and be looking at items A, D, and E. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
That was moved by Kelly, seconded by Chris. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda, items A, D, and E, pass unanimously six to zero. We will then continue with the consent agenda. And so we've got items B, which are considering the minutes of the September 8, 2020 city council workshop and regular meeting. Chris, would you like to address that?
No, I'm just abstaining from the vote, because I wasn't on the council at the time.
Okay. Understand where you're at. So we've got the minutes from September 8 and September 16. We have one abstention from that. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly, seconded by Zach. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Items B and C were passed unanimously five to zero with one abstention. Thank you. We now are going to take a look at a resolution. We're going to consider Resolution 2022-02, a resolution affording Cherry Haas as representative for the City of McMinnville's Budget Committee. And so Jennifer, do you want me to address just the process since I was a part of that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I presented the staff report just as a way to make, make sure that we remember the background on it.
Sure. Our first meeting in December, we brought another name to be put on the Budget Committee, and we had some concerns about that. I've talked to a number of you that had the concerns, and so I've met with Cherry, and she has accepted the opportunity to represent the City of McMinnville on the Budget Committee for another three years. I've had the opportunity to meet with Victoria Ernst and share with her what had happened and have indicated that next year, when we have an opportunity, feel free to, to apply. And if there's other opportunities, you know, I would let her know of other opportunities to serve. So any discussion from the group on this? I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-02. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? This resolution passes unanimously six to zero. Our next item of business tonight is ordinance, an ordinance, and we are going to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5109. We will, is there any, does anyone object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, I'll go ahead. And Amanda, could you read this by title only?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5109, an ordinance of the City of McMinnville amending chapters 10.04, 10.28, and 10.44 of the McMinnville Municipal Code relating to abandoned vehicles.
Thank you. We will now call on the city attorney to present, and it looks like Tim's going to help us with that, but Amanda, we'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to do a share screen here real quick. Let me know once it's popped up on your screens as the title page.
It looks good.
Okay, great. So we're, staff are back with, before you to discuss updates to the McMinnville Municipal Code Title 10, particularly related to abandoned vehicles. And like the mayor mentioned, I have Captain Tim Simons in council chambers as well to address any questions that may come up during the presentation. So the roadmap for our discussion today is we'll go over the purpose of these revisions, the background that led to the proposed revisions, an overview of what the proposed revisions are, and then the next steps for today. So the purpose is to clarify particularly how the city handles abandoned vehicles and how they're defined. So we're going to try to clarify what constitutes an abandoned vehicle, how we distinguish abandoned vehicles from other parked vehicles, and also from vehicles, recreational vehicles that are part of the recreational vehicle permit program, and then outlining the process for appealing a tow of an abandoned vehicle. So as background, as the council may recall, we did a work session on this just back in December 14, 2021, and we went over at that time the specific, each of the specific changes that are proposed. This all started back in 2018, where there was a robust discussion about issues related to RVs and other abandoned vehicles that are parked on the city streets. That led to the passage of ordinance 5049 in 2018. And so basically, what we're doing now is just with, you know, some history, with a few years of practice, we see that there's some, some need for some clarification. And also as background, ORS Chapter 819 does deal with abandoned vehicles, so we just need to make sure that we're being consistent with state statutes and meeting all the state requirements for towing abandoned vehicles. So there's four main revisions that we are proposing. They're provided in the packet. The first, and probably one of the most important, is clarifying the definition of abandoned vehicle. It was a little confusing because for two reasons. One is that the definition talked about a vehicle in violation, and so it wasn't clear what then caused, how that triggering of the violation occurred. So we just clarified to say it's a vehicle that's parked or kept on the right-of-way that then meets one of several conditions. And then the second clarification, the second issue that we were facing was that valid registration and valid insurance were, or I should say, not being registered and not having insurance were combined into one of those conditions. And so it was confusing whether you needed both of those things to not, to be invalid, or if one or the other was sufficient to be considered an abandoned vehicle. So we separated those two things out, and I think that'll provide a lot more clarity about what an abandoned vehicle is. The second thing that we are clarifying is that we're prohibiting parking of abandoned vehicles, and this kind of feeds into the third point, is to distinguish what the violation of parking an abandoned vehicle on the right-of-way from vehicles that are just parked for an extended period of time. So there's still the ability, if a vehicle isn't considered abandoned, but is on the right-of-way for an extended period of time, that there is enforcement that can still be taken against those vehicles as well. But that for abandoned vehicles, you don't need to wait for 72 hours. And then finally, there wasn't, in the McMinnville Municipal Code, there wasn't a specific due process, appeals process outlined. And so basically, we just codified the due process that's already in another part of our code in Title II, and we made that consistent in this, in this chat, in this Title 10, that we're going to rely on that same, same appeals process. So the next steps for tonight is that the ordinance is for council's consideration and assuming passage tonight or passage at the next meeting, if that, so if the council so chooses, it'll be 30, effective 30 days after the passage of the ordinance. So that's a high-level overview. Like I said, we discussed this at the December 14 work session, but we are happy to answer any questions that the council may have of us.
Let's go ahead and open this up for discussion as a council and asking any questions of Amanda or Tim. Again, we've had an opportunity to go over this in somewhat depth. So any questions or clarifications that need to be made?
I had one question, and I'm sorry, I'm looking through my packet to find my note on it. I thought I had a note in the packet, so pardon me one second, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Remy.
I can't find it, but the, shucks. The note is about a language that is specific to, I guess I could use the Ctrl+F function, vehicles that appear abandoned? I'm looking for the rewrite on it. Oh, yeah, so in definitions, the qualifiers of appears, can, is there a way, that's so, I, sorry, I'm just struggling for my words tonight, but that, how something appears can be very different based on, based on your lens. And I recently had an electrician come look at something in my house that I'm very proud of, of my new house, and they commented on what a kind of rundown place it was. I think it's great. So, you know, that, that, but with that in mind, how do we, you know, if our legal language says that a vehicle appears abandoned, that's, that's very different, I think, than a vehicle appearing wrecked, partially dismantled, or junked, because those things are fairly clear visual cues. What, what will give us that definition? How will, how will a person be able to delineate that that vehicle is abandoned? How, you know, I think you hear me. Thanks.
Yes, I, I understand the question, and frankly, it is subjective, right? I mean, when you use that kind of language, the state statute does not define what an abandoned vehicle is. So there's not a whole lot of guidance from the state. But in any of these scenarios, particularly where you have a scenario that's not, well, in any of these scenarios, we have to document exactly the reason why we're treating it as an abandoned vehicle. So, you know, let's say, for example, if it's the unexpired, if it has unexpired or expired registration, then we, we have to take pictures of that. Or, you know, if we're running insurance on the vehicle, we have to have records of that. So it would be a very fact-specific investigation by the police in determining that something is abandoned. And that is also why that we do have a due process, due process option for people, because, you know, they need the ability to contest what we determine is abandoned or not. So I don't know if Captain Simons has anything further. He, his department has way more experience with dealing with these vehicles than I do.
I think you've done a great job of providing the definition. As far as the practice is concerned, to hopefully clarify or alleviate some, some, some issues that may be there as far as the definition is concerned, is we do do our due diligence in attempting to contact the owner by a couple of different steps. First would be leaving a flyer on the vehicle stating that something did the effect of that it's, it's been called in as a potential abandoned vehicle, and to contact the parking department to clarify any issues that may be surrounding it, if it's not speaking out to being identified as being abandoned because it doesn't have insurance on it, or it doesn't have current valid tags on it, or it doesn't appear to be inoperable. So if it just appears to be abandoned, we do take steps to try and at least outreach and contact the owner of the vehicle if, if there are no identifying, if there is no identifying information for the vehicle and the registered owner that's readily identifiable. Then once we have, if we do have contact with the owner of the vehicle, then we try to come up with some sort of a plan as far as what their intentions of the vehicle are. If there's no contact with the, with the owner of the vehicle, we don't do a, an automatic tow right away. We have the option and the ability to do it within 24 hours of tagging. However, we take a little bit longer in doing that, even though we have the 24-hour option. We generally wait at least three to four days before we do that, after towing, or after tagging the vehicle, to hopefully be able to have some sort of contact with the owner and have the owner, if we're not able to identify where exactly they live, to have them outreach to the police department, so that we can resolve the issue before it gets to the point where we're towing it. Then I hope that helps as far as clarification is concerned.
Remy, does that answer your question?
Um, I, I, I appreciate the additional information, and yes, the, the kind of criteria that, for what constitutes an apparition helps as well. Thank you.
Okay. Sal, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have a question also about the five conditions that trigger a vehicle determined, determined to be abandoned. As you recall, in the, um, in the work session, I asked if this is something that could be used to basically get a, a person who is using their vehicle for housing out of that vehicle. And I guess my fear is that the way the conditions read, that, you know, one of the five conditions for whether a vehicle is abandoned is whether it appears to have been abandoned, and I wonder why that isn't, you know, part of the, the root paragraph. An abandoned vehicle means a vehicle that appears to be abandoned, that is parked or kept on blah, 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 because if you do that, then it makes the remaining four conditions dependent on the actual abandonment of the vehicle, as opposed to, say, not having the money to pay for your insurance, or not having the money to pay for a, a registration plate, or, um, current registration. And so, my fear is, or my concern is, that this could be used, as homelessness proponents have claimed, to basically take someone's housing. If I'm in a vehicle that is an RV, and I am not able to pay for the current registration, then it seems to me that, under the terms of this statute, I could have my vehicle taken and towed within twenty-four hours, even if I'm using it as housing, and even if it's not, in fact, abandoned. So, can somebody speak to that, please?
Um, I, well, so I guess I'll start out by saying that, in the context of an RV that is located on the city street, Captain Simons, correct me if I'm wrong, but generally speaking, if we have an RV that's on a city street, there is additional due process that we are undertaking to make sure that nobody's in the, nobody's in there, or if we think that if we are, believe somebody's in there, that we are doing, we're doing additional due process, because, you know, then we are essentially treating it as a home. You know, in the context of a, of a vehicle that's just sitting on the property, or sitting on the right-of-way, I'm not sure how, how this police department has handled that if somebody's inside the vehicle. But to get to your point, though, I think more fundamentally about putting the condition that it be appear abandoned, and also then, let's say, one of the remaining four conditions, I think that will bring in a lot of subjectivity and make it much more difficult to tow. So, I would defer to the council to determine if that is something the council as a whole is interested in seeing in the code.
Amanda, can I follow up before this goes to Captain Simons? Do you, do you see the tension that I was just describing in the law, that where you're asking us to, that we're being recommended to pass?
Uh, you mean the tension of, so, for example, the, the no valid registration, and that being determined as that qualifies as abandoned, and it might not be abandoned, considered abandoned by the person who owns the vehicle?
Yeah, I mean, my concern is that this might be used to take somebody out of their housing. So, I guess I'd just like to hear from a, from a implementation standpoint, I'd like to hear that concern addressed. I mean, yes, you're correct, Sal, that is exactly what is intended, or no, that's not what's going to happen, would be good to know.
I mean, it's not intended to take anybody's housing.
Because if they're, if they're, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's, it's, it's really a public safety concern, is that vehicles that are not registered, not licensed, that are junked, or inoperative, or disabled, are not only, not only are they already not allowed to be on the public right-of-way, it is a public safety concern.
And so, sorry, Mayor, let me ask you, Amanda, how, how would one cure this? Like, if I, if I, let's say I don't have, um, my registration, and, and so therefore it's determined that the vehicle's an abandoned vehicle, it usually takes a little bit more than just a day or something to, to cure that, so.
Yeah. What, what I heard from Captain Simons, and maybe he has some anecdotal, like, experiences to talk about this, but from what I've heard from him is if he can make, if the police department makes contact with the owner, they will work with them on a plan. It's extremely rare, it sounds like, where a, a tag and tow happens, all in a twenty-four-hour period.
Yes, that, that is accurate.
And the comment that I had is if someone is using their vehicle as housing, then it comes under the camping ordinance and not the abandoned vehicle ordinance, is that correct?
Right.
And there's much different stipulations and process that we go through on the camping ordinance as compared to abandoned vehicle ordinance.
Right, that's what I was talking about with the additional, there's a lot more due process that we undertake when, when it's, somebody's living in there.
Yeah.
So, Sal, do you still have concerns?
Um, I may vote yes on the, on the second reading, but I'm probably a no on the first reading, because I'd like to get some of the questions answered and just have a better understanding.
Okay. Other comments from members of the council?
I think Counselor Gary has his hand raised.
It is. Your, your, that hand blends so well with the, the paint behind you, Zach, so go ahead.
Uh, I will have a painting party. Um, so, thanks for the presentation, good stuff, as usual. Just checking my understanding of the definitions and what would qualify under the definitions under this, and I understand, I think the mayor brought up a good point, the difference between what we're talking about here and the camping ordinance, but as I read the definition of recreational vehicle, and the three qualifiers under recreational vehicle, the turtle dove shelters would be considered a recreational vehicle. Is that, is that correct?
No, they're not licensed.
In, in the definitions, and maybe elsewhere in here, it would, it would boot them out through other qualifications, but it contains a sleeping facility, is designed or used for human occupancy, and has temporary living quarters for recreational seasonal emergency use, and has its own motive power, or is mounted on or towed by another vehicle, and then later, the defined vehicle, and include bicycles as vehicles. Am I understanding that definition and applying it to something in our community correctly?
I, I haven't looked at that specific definition, so I'm just reading it here real quick. My, I mean, I would, I don't know how the police department's been interpreting it, but I would say that if it is mounted onto another, another vehicle, that it probably could meet that definition, yes.
And, and on the next page, vehicle is defined at the very end, includes bicycles?
Yes.
We, we have treated the, the turtle doves historically as the camping ordinance, and not towing them, based on abandoned vehicle ordinance, if that helps as far as clarification is concerned.
It does tell me how you guys are using this out in the community, and which is, which is helpful, but as, as written, I just wanted to see if I'm interpreting that correctly. Um, and then, my second, which, you know, maybe we need more, more review or discussion, or there's elsewhere in this text that would, would boot them out of that qualification. But my other question is, is, is actually probably more for Captain Simons. You had mentioned, you know, what, you talked about your process, once it's called in, this, then, then it's moved into, is this all entirely a complaint-driven process?
Yes, they are all complaint-driven.
Okay. Those are my.
Including the, including the camping ordinance complaints that we, that we receive and respond to as well.
Copy that, all complaint-driven process.
Yes.
Thanks.
And I should, I, I can't remember if I brought the, I think I brought this up at the December fourteenth meeting, but also to reiterate that we will be looking at, with the council, the camping ordinance, again, as part of House Bill, it's escaping me, I think it's thirty-one fifteen, that is about how cities can regulate camping, so we will be looking at what our camping ordinance says in relation to that, but that's going to be a separate process from dealing with the abandoned vehicles.
Understood, thanks.
Okay, let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I am definitely in favor of the idea of, of the police being able to move legitimately, you know, non-functional vehicles and tow those vehicles, so I'm, I'm in favor of giving them that authority, but I don't think that this draft has, you know, hit my concerns. I think that I'd like to see a less subjective, I guess, or a clearer path between when something is going to be treated as, as an abandoned, as an abandonment issue versus as a, as a camping issue, and I don't know if that's something that can be addressed in an amendment to this ordinance by reference to the other ordinance, but I, I would like to see that clarified more than it is currently.
So, Counselor Peralta, if I understand it, when you say the other ordinance, do you mean something like, in the definition it says, so let's say it says, "and is not subject to the camping ordinance"?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the language would be exactly, but I just think that taking away the, the potential subjective enforcement, I mean, if you have a situation where, we usually do this, but under a certain set of circumstance, like maybe the person's, you know, being very non-cooperative, and a challenge to, to the officers, and the person gets frustrated, and they get charged under a different set of framework, I'd just like to remove that kind of ambiguity if we can.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, it's, I would love to hear Captain Simons' take on this, but what I'm thinking, if, if the rest of the council would be, would be interested in an amendment, is, so, for example, like, when we talk about abandoned vehicle, it says, um, I added the language that says, without having been issued a permit, subject pursuant to Section ten point two eight point two zero five, that's our recreational vehicle permit program, I could add something there as, you know, as an amendment, that would be something like, "and is not subject to enforcement under," and then I'd need the camping ordinance reference, but.
Yeah.
I could, I could see something like that.
And I think you might need that anyway to, when we deal with the legislative policies, so I, I appreciate the consideration. I hope, I'd be interested in hearing how others feel about that.
Thank you. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't be more in agreement with Counselor Peralta. I absolutely want to move this work along and, and get the, get, get some of this cleaned up, but I do think that there needs to be a little bit more specificity here. My, saying, I, I have a similar concern that it, that the policy doesn't necessarily dictate the practice, and I think the practice sounds very positive, so I'd love for the policy to have really clear language that defines that, and, and again, I know I made this point, that the word appears to me, also because that, to me, is part of the vagueness of the ordinance. So, I, I would love some, some additional clarity as well before we move forward with this. Thank you.
Any other, okay, Zach, again?
Uh, I would just, since they sort of opened the door for what others think, I would agree with the comments of the last two counselors.
Any other comments from counselors?
I would just like to add that I definitely hear Sal and Remy and Zach loud and clear on, on their concerns, and do see where they're coming from on that. My question would be, is if Amanda's proposed amendment and the language gets you there, or if we need to have this come back to us at a different meeting, and if that's the case, um, you know, I'd, I'd hate to see a, a ordinance or a policy get, get so diluted down that it's not enforceable for the, the reasons that we want to have this, and not the reasons that you, Remy, Zach, and Sal have cited your concerns for. I, I do share those concerns, but I also want to make sure we still have an ordinance that isn't just a paper tiger.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Chris.
I couldn't have said that any better myself. That was exactly what I raised my hand for, was I want to make sure, I absolutely hear the concerns and understand the concerns, but I also don't want to hand something to the police department that's completely unenforceable and doesn't accomplish what we set out to do, so.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go over to Kelly. You're on mute.
I totally agree with Chris and Adam, I just, personally, I would not change the language, but, because I think the police are actually administering this very fairly, but I guess the others feel, I just don't want to take the, whatever, the enforcement capability out of this, I think that would be a bad thing to do.
Thank you, Kelly. So, let's go back to Amanda and just see what your thoughts are at this point, and then we can kind of take it out and see if it takes care of the concerns of the majority of the council.
Yeah, so what I wrote down as a possible addition, and, and Captain Simons, I hate to put you on the spot, but if you think that this is something that we should discuss further, and you would actually recommend continuing this, that I'm totally fine with that. But what I put was, so, what, the addition where it starts without, in, in the definition of abandoned vehicle, ten point zero four point zero three zero, the addition I put in, without having been issued a permit pursuant to Section ten point two eight point two zero five, two zero five, and this is the addition, and is not otherwise subject to McMinnville Municipal Code eight point three six point zero three zero, that's the, that's the anti-camping provision in our code, I looked it up. So, that would be the addition, if somebody wanted to make a motion with that amendment, it would be, "and is not otherwise subject to McMinnville Municipal Code eight point three six point zero three zero."
Do we have a, a motion to accept the amended? Chris?
Before we accept that, I'd like to hear from, and not meaning to put him on the spot, but I'd like to hear from the police department to see, is this going to be able to be enforceable on their side for what they're trying to accomplish?
So, Captain?
Well, I, I see some potential pitfalls, and I think that I understand the, the, the counselors that were expressing some hesitancy in, in the, the way that it's, it's written currently, without the, without the exceptions that Amanda just put in there. Some of the, some of the issues that we run into is more specifically, as, as some of the counselors have fielded calls from people on McDaniel Lane with regards to RVs that are parked there. If it gets to the point where we are enforcing the anti-camping or camping ordinance as it's written, if we enforce that, or when we enforce that, to get, to, to mitigate the issues that are presented with how, how the, the person is, is in violation of the camping ordinance, we need to take whatever it is that they're utilizing as, as evidence to support the, the issue that, that's being presented. So, if it's, if it's a camping issue, and it's a car, or it's a RV, or it's a turtle dove, that has to be confiscated as, as fruits of the crime, as, as evidence to the crime versus being towed by a, a tow company, which means that we would have to then store that evidence until it is either released by the court, or the, the case is adjudicated. That, that's my understanding of it, and Amanda may have a different perspective on that, or a different stance on it, but to, to the point where being able to specifically address issues that, that come up outside of the camping. to specifically address, uh, issues that, that, that come up outside of the camping, uh, issues where it comes to RVs, or cars, or turtle doves, um, the, the, the issues that we deal with on a, on a daily basis where we get calls from, from, uh, citizens about abandoned vehicles that have been parked, uh, in, in a specific area for weeks, months, even potentially even years, um, that haven't been dealt with, those are, those are fairly simple to, to take care of. The, the, the bigger issue, uh, really is, uh, is addressing those, uh, those items that, um, that have been spoken about more specifically by, uh, Counselor Peralta as far as, uh, people utilizing them as some sort of living area that then becomes to the point where citizens start calling in and complaining about the fact that they are in a specific area and are then seeming, uh, hurdles to be able to, to deal with and address those, um, appropriately.
So if, if I'm hearing you correctly, then it, it, it sounds to me like this would actually invalidate what the, 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 kind of the intent of this, um, to begin with. And, and then secondarily, I guess, one thing I'd like to hear is, you know, it's not like we're going in and just taking these vehicles without a whole bunch of effort being put in to addressing the concerns. Am I correct? What's kind of the procedure that's happening?
Correct. Well, I mean, there's, so there's, there's a couple of different, uh, items that we're talking about here. Uh, one would be a van, abandoned vehicle, so those are the vehicles that are, are parked, or have been parked for weeks, months, years. Uh, you know, we do outreach, attempting to locate the owner, uh, placing information on the, on the vehicle before we tow it. We, we then, uh, if there's, if there's no contact from the owner, then we do, uh, uh, tag the vehicle again, waiting for someone to, uh, come forward. Uh, if we're not able to, uh, make contact with the person, then, then we, then we go about the steps to towing the vehicle. If we're talking about vehicles that are, um, being utilized to, to live in, and, and still meet this, the same criteria as defined in abandoned vehicles because they don't have a license plate that's affixed to them, uh, valid tags, valid insurance, they look, or appear to be disabled or inoperable, uh, we, we do work with those folks to try and find out where they can, or try to identify places where they can potentially go versus where they currently are as, as defined in the camping ordinance, uh, where they, where they can park their vehicles during specific times of the day and, 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 and those types of things, versus taking up essential residency on, on the roadway, um, which is what has happened on McDaniel Lane, uh, for the last little while that we continue to address. Um, so we, we do attempt to, uh, find, uh, other avenues to allow for, uh, people to find different places to go to that would, uh, would qualify as per the current McMinnville Municipal Code for camping ordinance. Um, but at the same time, if it gets to the point where there are no, they're, they're not participating in that, or it's, it's not getting the desired result, uh, in a, in a timely fashion, timely fashion has been, you know, weeks, uh, even months as far as any action or inaction at this point, uh, then it, it comes, it comes down to the point where we can continue to issue them, uh, camping ordinance violation citations, but their vehicle stays, their vehicle stays there, uh, and it, and it doesn't, uh, it doesn't take care of the, the perceived, uh, the perceived issue. Um, so we continue to, to write, uh, this, the same thing over and over and over again. Uh, if, if it gets to the point where, uh, we, we need to have some sort of enforcement action, uh, we have utilized, uh, uh, the towing ordinance to tow RVs, uh, we have never towed an RV with anyone inside of it. We have always mitigated that issue by making sure that the pre, the person or people are out of it prior to it taking place. Um, uh, and if there is an issue, we don't, uh, we don't press that issue with them. We, we, uh, we, we do all that we can to make sure that there are no, uh, no, no issues, uh, specific to, um, doing that action.
Thank you. I, I appreciate all that. Um, and, and I wanted to hear all that. I kind of knew most of that, but I wanted to hear it, and I thought it was good to have it on the record. Um, and with that all being said, I think I would agree with Kelly that we don't need to change the language of this. Um, I, I think we need to trust that you guys are doing the job you need to be doing. Um, and it sounds to me like you're doing an excellent job of, of, of doing everything in your power to defer and be careful. So, thank you.
So let's hear from other counselors that had concerns, where they're leaning. Uh, is the amendment that Amanda put before us significant, sufficient to take care of your concerns?
Uh, yeah, the, the amendment, I think, would address my concerns, although I think based on the conversation today, maybe it, it would bear, um, you know, a little more conversation. I, I'm definitely a, a no on the first vote on this, so I think it's going to get pushed to the next meeting regardless.
Okay. Remy, I, I saw your hand up and, and, uh, you, you took it down, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I mean, there, I, I still feel like there's some, um, vagueness that needs to be addressed, um, in the ordinance, um, and if I'm understanding the report as well, it, that, or if I'm under, I'm sorry, not the report, but if I'm understanding Captain Simons, uh, as well, then there's also this, um, uh, uh, there is, um, the potential that somebody could lose their housing, um, and that doesn't benefit any of the departments. I think, I, I would love to hear, basically have Captain Simons' comments as part of the staff report, um, or if there's a possibility of having kind of a, that, that response. I, I'd like a little bit more time to digest it, make sure that I understood what he was saying correctly and clearly. Um, uh, so I, it, to answer your initial question, yes, the ordinance does, um, address some of my initial concerns, but following this discussion, I would, I would personally like to table this for the evening, get, uh, police feedback in writing on this, uh, kind of proposed change, or, or la, both sides of it really, how the, the, the police perspective on how, um, this ordinance as it's currently written, and with this other new factor, um, in it, how that would play out in terms of effectiveness. So I feel like I can make a holistic, uh, well-informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, let's go to Zach and then go to Sal.
Uh, yes, sorry, I was waving goodbye to a tiny little baby that was being very well-behaved in the office. Um, the, uh, and they didn't let me hold it, but I think the, I, I see both sides. I, I think what we're, you know, trying to, we need a scalpel on where the rubber meets the road, and this, and we're trying to, you know, I'm looking, I'm trying to see if this is a hammer or a scalpel, and I think, I think, I think Remy's punchline is more, more time, and I think that's, that's helpful. I'd like to just understand, uh, have more thought and time to understand the ramifications, and a little bit more in the, in the document here about where the rubber, what, where and how the rubber meets the road on how this is written. And so I would, I would think I would just suffice to say, uh, echo Remy's comments about, I think more time would behoove it.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Sal.
Yeah, I, I think I would also be interested in just seeing more analysis about how this would be, um, you know, from everything that I've heard tonight, it sounds like the con, the more difficult area that this is aiming to address are sort of non-compliant people who are using, um, the RV as housing outside of the program, and that have an, an RV that is older and probably not very operable. Um, and I would be curious to know if this were applied to a housing situation, how would it, any provision of it, um, create additional insulation from the, the main thrust of both the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and the recent decision at the state level that, with regard to how people have to, how we have to treat people with respect to housing. Um, I'm just, I'm, I just don't know that we've... I, I just think that the courts here have set a certain standard, and I just wonder if, like, we're just trying to get at that standard a bunch of different ways, um, to try and do an enforcement that they're just not going to let us do anyway. So I guess I'd like to hear more analysis about that, maybe between these two meetings. So, thanks.
Thank you, Sal. So, Adam?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify or put on record what I feel this ordinance is getting at. Um, I feel this ordinance is really designed to get at when you have RVs and trailers and, and trucks that, that aren't being utilized. They might be a part of somebody that is, is unhoused and is using a different vehicle as housing, but I don't feel this ordinance is attacking the specific vehicle they're living in. I feel it's attacking the entourage of vehicles that could be within the vicinity of where they currently have a vehicle placed. Um, you see that on Mc, McDaniel Lane, you see that on, uh, over off, like 12th and, and Lafayette Avenue, you see that on Washington Street between Ford and Galloway. Um, there's a bunch of different spots you see that where we're not talking about, um, the vehicle they're specifically living in, or the trailer they're specifically living in. I mean, sometimes these are flatbed trailers that just have a ton of items on them that haven't moved in, in weeks or months, and our constituents have called and emailed and, uh, talked to staff and talked to us as counselors, and, uh, we've really gone nowhere with things since, uh, our municipal judge threw out that case back in August, and so, um, we had this coming before us in December, and none of this really came up, and so I just, I don't know, I would like to make sure we have an ordinance on the books that is enforceable, and we don't dilute it down to where we basically have, uh, for lack of a better analogy, what the other analogy is used tonight, we don't have a toy hammer in the officer's toolbox, and we still let them enforce what we've said we're going to enforce when we, we're looking at the sewage rate surcharge and what we had going on Marsh Lane and Dustin Court.
Thank you, Adam.
And Mayor, I just wanted to note too, the, the, um, court decision that Counselor Garvin is talking about was not, did not involve RVs. It was about just regular motor vehicles, um, where the judge found that these issues that we're trying to clarify here, these are the specific provisions that the judge outlined as being somewhat conflicting or confusing, which is why we're trying to address those. So when Captain Simons talks about the, the cases that seem to be easier, it was one of those easier cases that led to this, um, which has meant that the, um, police department has not been doing any, basically any enforcement of abandoned vehicles while this, um, since that decision.
Well, I get a sense that, uh, we wouldn't get through, uh, the first reading. Uh, do you feel that maybe a little more discussion, Amanda, would be appropriate and bring it back to our next council meeting?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Um, and I think it sounds like from the, the way this discussion has gone, um, that there probably, it sounds like some of the counselors are wanting a little bit more, a little bit larger discussion about RVs, um, and, and turtle doves in particular, um, so we can, we can, uh, Captain Simons and I and, and the police department can regroup and, and bring some more information back.
Okay, great. So, uh, ordinance number 5109, we will table that and bring it back to our next council meeting with more clarity and, uh, a staff report that we can look at prior to that and, and have another discussion in two weeks. Okay. Uh, with that being said, um, we will, we will now adjourn our city council meeting at 8:15, and we'll move over to our executive session.